Good morning, everyone. It is April the 23rd, 9:00 a.m., and I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and just ask that you take a moment of silence. Commissioner Pritchett?
Please join us for the Fledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, can I get a motion for minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to resolutions. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution is for National Day of Prayer. Can I have my prayer folks come up here? Thank you for being here today. Okay, I'm gonna read this resolution and then you guys can have the floor. Whereas civic prayers and national days of prayer have a long and venerable history in our constitutional republic dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775. And whereas the Declaration of Independence, our first statement as Americans of national purpose and identity, made the laws of nature and nature's God the foundation of our United States of America and asserted that people have inalienable rights that are God-given. And whereas the Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislatures to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court and the U.S. Congress themselves begin each day with prayer. It's a shame they didn't do that for county commissions. Whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May in each year as a national day of prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the national day of prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give thanks for blessings received, to request healing for wounds endured, and to ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and her citizens. Whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a day of prayer in Brevard County when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our state and nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim Thursday, May 2nd, 2019, to be designated as a day of prayer in Brevard County and encourage the citizens to observe that day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of April, 2019. Madam Chair, I recommend we approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you again. We look so forward to coming to see you all every year. Thank you, Commissioner Smith and County Manager Abate. Thank you, Mrs. Pritchett, Commissioner Pritchett, and thank you, Commissioner Isnardi, and thank you, Commissioner Loeb, and thank you, Commissioner Tobias, and thank you, County Attorney Ms. Bentley. National Day of Prayer, yay! Yay! Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am Loretta Dozier. I'm the founder of Dove Bible Club, and Dove Bible Club is an after-school Bible club that teaches character education based on the life of Jesus Christ. And we've been in ministry now for 11 years in Brevard County. So we're currently in 33 schools, after-school, so we get to share with the students about Jesus Christ, the character of Jesus Christ, and then we encourage the students to go and do likewise. And I, let me introduce our pastor, Pastor Evie Ostrander and Pastor Marco Ostranders. Evie Ostrander is the senior pastors of the Mission Church there in conjunction with Dove Bible Club that we've organized the 15 prayer observances on the bulletin, the program that you have. Then you have Pastor Charles and Pastor Bowana from City of Refuge Christian Church, and you have Ms. Margaret Irving also from the Mission Church. So yay for the National Day of Prayer. Thank you so much. You are invited to come to either one of these 15 observances through Brevard County. Pastor Evie, if you could just come and read the prayer observances, and thank you again so much, Commissioner Smith.
Yes, I'm not a pastor.
As you can see, some of these observances will be at the flagpole of the cities, at their city halls, and some of them in the chambers. And so we have some observances that are larger than others and some that are just starting, but we're very excited reaching the county from all ends of the county, from Port St. John all the way down to Barefoot Bay, and then really goes beyond that, but we're just speaking of the county right now. So Indy Atlantic City Hall, and you can see we're starting at 7:00 in the morning, and then Melbourne Beach Town Hall at 8:00, Indian Harbor Beach at 9:00, West Melbourne Veterans' Memorial Complex, also at 9:00, some of them had to run concurrently, and Satellite Beach at 10:00, Brevard County right here in Viera at 11:30, Barefoot Bay Town Hall at 12:00, Rockledge City Hall at 1:00, Cocoa at 2:30, Port St. John at 4:00, their community center, Malabar Town Hall 4, Grant Valkyrie at 5:00. And then there are churches, and some, like at the Mission Church in particular, there are four churches that have combined to have a service, but then we have services in Creole, French Creole, and also in Spanish. So we're very excited, and we know that this isn't all, we know that there are more prayer meetings and prayer observances throughout the county that we celebrate, but we're just bringing attention to the National Day of Prayer, and thank you so much for your support. Thank you. Know that you're all prayed for all the time.
Good, we need it.
Thank you.
Anyone else that's gonna join them? This is definitely one of my favorites. So I'm gonna read the proclamation for Older Americans Month. Whereas it is a desire of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners and the Brevard County Commission, or the Brevard Commission on Aging, to celebrate the enormous contributions of our older citizens in the strengthening and prosperity of Brevard County. And whereas Brevard County represents the 10th largest elder population in Florida, and approximately 31% of Brevard County's total population is 60 years of age or older. And whereas older citizens are a diverse and treasured link to our heritage and join with the citizens across the United States in the promotion of National Administration on Aging's theme of connect, create, and contribute. And whereas, in keeping with the national theme, we recognize the Brevard Community Kitchen, which prepares and delivers hot nutritious meals to 1,821 seniors throughout Senior at Lunch or the Meals on Wheels program administered by the Aging Matters of Brevard. And whereas last year, over 577 volunteers, mostly over the age of 60, delivered 138,127 meals to 1,152 homebound seniors for the Meals on Wheels program. These 577 volunteers are the backbone of the program, demonstrating care, concern, and attention to seniors' welfare. They deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and continue to make for the Meals on Wheels program each day. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Older Americans Month. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of April, AD, 2019. Can I get a motion, please?
Still moved.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is the 56th Older Americans Month, and it is a testimony to the impact that our old adults make in the community. And Aging Matters could not do what it does every day without the contributions of these lovely ladies and the hundreds of others that we have throughout the county. So thank you for this recognition, it's truly appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm John Batomsky, Chairman of the Brevard Commission on Aging, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be with you here today. I'm not a great orator, but I've been a geriatrician here in Brevard for 36 years, and the work that Aging Matters and Meals on Wheels does is truly invaluable. It meets some of the basic needs of humanity, food, shelter, and clothing and food being number one. And without proper nutrition and care that these folks get, these people would unfortunately become malnourished, would become ill, many are frail to begin with, and then may either fall or have a exacerbation of other medical conditions which would then end them up in the hospital, which is costly to our healthcare system, then to the rehab centers, and then many are not able to leave and become a patient at a nursing home, which then puts a further burden on, you know, on our financial system. And the county also has to participate with taking care of these folks in the nursing homes. So the work that these volunteers do is invaluable. I have just recently met two patients that came into one of our retirement homes, and because they were not only able to drive, and they had very proud to show me their plaque of 28 years of service to Meals on Wheels. So in the spirit of Easter, I wish many blessings upon these volunteers, and thank you for the invaluable work that they do in helping taking care of our seniors and many other homebound folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, it sounds like you're a pretty good orator. I don't know what you're saying you weren't so good at.
I just wanted to introduce two of our volunteers, Mary and Novella, our partners. They drive together, they drive two routes a week, one of them in the Booker T. Washington neighborhood, and they've got this pristine car that brings this wonderful hot food into that very low-income neighborhood. They've been driving for 14 years, and they were nice enough to come today to represent our volunteers, and then this afternoon, they will all be celebrated at our South Area Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon. So I wanna give them a huge round of applause, they're just awesome. I forgot to mention that Mary's 83 and Novella's 88.
Wow. I also want to just thank Commissioner Isnardi. Last budget season, she had this put in as a line item, and I really wanna thank you guys for all you do. I don't wanna live in a nation that doesn't take care of people who can't take care of themselves. And the volunteer effort that goes through, you know, from the county side, you're right, it's a great savings on the whole community, but I just can't thank you enough for it.
And thank you for having hearts like you do, I really appreciate it. You deliver meals?
During election year, I didn't do it at all.
You get too busy. I've gotten to do it a couple times, and it's delightful.
Yeah, I used to do it pretty frequently.
It's a great service.
Oh, yeah. This is up to socializing.
I know, and he keeps my nursing homes, which cost us a fortune.
You know, it is.
Yep, I'm pretty sure. And you know, in the society room, the kids haven't learned to take care of their parents very well either.
Side commentary.
I know. Training my kids to take care of their momma.
Good thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lori Scott's up there just there.
I know, I saw that.
She's getting help personally.
I didn't get any from mine.
It's all me. I'm 32, 33.
But you know, it's worth it every minute of it.
All right, do we have the folks from the drug court here? Thank you, guys, for coming. All right, I'm gonna read this proclamation for Treatment Drug Court Month. Whereas this year marks the 30th anniversary of Treatment Drug Courts and the establishment of more than 3,000 of these courts nationwide since 1989. And whereas Treatment Drug Courts represent the cornerstone of justice reform sweeping the nation and have served more than 1.5 million individuals. And whereas Treatment Drug Courts are recognized as the most successful justice system intervention in our nation's history and save an average of $6,000 for every individual they serve. And whereas Treatment Drug Courts significantly improve substance abuse outcomes, substantially reducing addiction and related crime, and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy. And whereas Treatment Drug Courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements, and increase the rate of addicted mothers delivering babies who are fully drug-free. And whereas Treatment Drug Courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bring together public safety and public health professionals, and demonstrate that when one person rises out of substance abuse and crime, we all rise. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida declares the month of May 2019 to be Treatment Drug Court Month. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of April, AD, 2019.
Still moved.
Can I get, yeah. Motion by Commissioner Loeb?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Please tell us a little bit about what you guys do, and I know I said it in the resolution, but...
Thank you. My name is Mary Beth Mish. I work in court administration, and I supervise Lisa Moody and Jean Mandis, who basically run our drug courts. We have Veterans Treatment Court, Adult Drug Court, and Juvenile Drug Court. We have a huge team. This is some of our team, Probations, Space Coast Recovery Center, Lifetime Counseling Center, several different agencies. It takes a team. We all know about the opioid epidemic. It's time to address this issue, and we thank you guys for doing this. We're honored to follow National Day of Prayer and Aging Matters because they're both wonderful programs.
I had the pleasure of going to Judge McKibbin's reunification ceremony, and that was pretty awesome.
That's awesome.
It was pretty intense, and it was even better than what I expected it to be. So I thought that was pretty neat to see those families all brought together and healed and doing good, and so I was honored that she even invited me, but...
Drug court works. It absolutely works. We will have a ceremony, a drug court ceremony, May 3rd, in courtroom 2G at 8:00 a.m.?
8:30 a.m.
8:30 a.m. You're certainly all invited.
If you could send us that, have somebody send that to our emails, so we can get it on our calendars, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you for all you do.
I wanna give you guys a shout-out as well, you know, what you all do, and then also what Veterans Court does. It certainly saves taxpayers a lot of money, it reduces unnecessary prosecution, and I think it pushes people in the right direction. So I've seen it since I moved to Brevard, and I can't say enough good about either of the programs. Thank you all.
And I have a card for an item, I'm not sure if anybody wants to pull anything else, or move anything else, or...
Oh, good.
Okay, so I need a motion to pass, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull items F-2 and F-21 for discussion.
Great, that's what I have cards for, too. And I believe, wait, one second, I have another card here. I have a card for F-13, so if you could make a motion pulling those items, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve consent with the exception of F-2, F-13, and F-21.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, a second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item F-2, I have a speaker. Did you wanna hear from the speaker first, or would you like to speak on it?
Speaker, Madam Chair.
Okay. Judy McLunney?
Judy McLunney, 1908, Manor Drive, Cocoa. I just wanna thank you for putting this up and supporting our signage and retail education on fertilizer ordinance. It's just really needed. I think you could compare it to putting up street signs to tell people which way to go, and if they go the right way, and they need to know, and they want to know, most people want to do the right thing. Several years ago, I went to my local ACE, and the clerk didn't even know about the fertilizer ordinance, and her boss, when we explained this, I did, she actually set up her own display. You're giving people resources and help to make the right choices, and most people really care about the lagoon, they want the right choices, and the retailers, in many cases, they want the right choices. And so this connection you're making to give them materials to make the right choices is nothing but helpful, and every pound that we can prevent from going into the lagoon of this really potent stuff called fertilizer that grows algae a lot, it's just saving all of us taxpayers so much money as well. Prevention is 99% of the cure. So I really support this, and I thank you for getting behind it and putting it as a needed amendment to our fertilizer ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I've passed out a proposed amendment to this ordinance. While I appreciate the need to prevent nutrient loading of the lagoon from a variety of sources, including fertilizer, I think the mandate included in this ordinance is premature. Mandates on private businesses should be a last resort. The amendment you have before you takes the mandate out of this, requires the county to produce the signage and distribute it to the retailers, but does not mandate them to put it up. Trying to do this through cooperation and education is far preferable to government mandates. Mandates do not allow for flexibility in unique circumstances, and these directives are simply cop-outs. This would force private businesses to do our job. So after discussion, I would make a motion for the acceptance of the amended ordinance, which simply takes out the mandate and puts in an optional signage. Madam Chair?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias. Do I have a second?
You may, but not yet.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb?
I have a question for you, if I can get my voice back here. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tobias. If we end up adopting the modified ordinance that you proposed here and distributed just now, if we find that a significant number of the retailers don't comply, would you be amenable to support something down the road, whether it be six months or otherwise, more in line with the original ordinance that was proposed, mandating that they display it?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
No, I would not. I'm against mandates on private businesses. On top of it, you know, the original ordinance, I don't think there's an enforcement clause on it, so, you know, not that that means anything, but it's kind of an open-ended mandate. So, you know, for that reason, I think the amended one, making it optional, there is no need for an enforcement clause on it. So for that reason, no, I would not support mandating this on private business at any time.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Ms. Virginia, these signs are gonna come out, the cost of them are coming out of the Indian River Lagoon Fund, correct?
Yes.
And so, well, here's the thing, we can't, fertilizer's illegal to put on property during the blackout periods, but the problem is, is that we're not allowed to stop sales during those times, because it's a state-of-Florida item. So, and you know, I've talked to so many people, they wanna do the right thing, and they just don't know, and if you go into a store and fertilizer's for sale, you just don't understand perhaps that you're not supposed to be using it during the heavy rain seasons. I think this is a great thing to do. I think out of all the things we're doing as far as education for the Indian River Lagoon and how much we're spending on lagoon, I think this is like tenths of a penny. So I fully support this. I think it's a good item. I actually wish I would've brought it myself, so I'm in full support of this item. It's just the businesses putting up the sign, which I think is responsible, since they're still able to sell the fertilizer. So I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve this ordinance.
Commissioner Tobias has a motion on, oh, and I don't know if it's gonna be a second, because Commissioner Loeb said he may have...
No, ma'am.
No.
Not as to Commissioner Tobias' motion.
Okay, so we don't have a second on Commissioner Tobias' motion? I just wanna verify before we move on.
I will second Commissioner Pritchett's motion, though.
Did you make a motion? Did you make a motion to prove it as is?
To prove this is.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, did, this one came out of District 4, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
May I have a couple brief questions for the Commissioner with your approval?
Yes.
How, Commissioner Smith, how large will these signs be?
I think the point of purchase, is that not correct?
No, sorry, not, sorry, the size, how large will these be?
I think they're varying sizes, aren't they?
Yeah, we have two, currently we have two sizes designed, one that's sort of, you know, normal notebook paper size and another that's bigger depending on how, what works better in the store. The larger one is, I think, 18 by 22 inches.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, have you spoken with any retailers and asked if, I'm not in the retail business, but I imagine it's harder to put on end caps and front displays. Did you get any input as to what buy-in for many of the local retailers before this mandate was?
I didn't personally have those conversations, but other people have had those conversations, both staff and consultants. And so some locations are amenable and this is Carolina Alvarez, she spoke to some of the stores directly.
Yes.
Thank you.
I spoke with Lowe's, they had no issue with putting the sign by the fertilizer. They just asked that it be laminated or plastic and they were, they also said they could help us determine the amount of sales, if any, and they can even narrow it down to specific kind and brand of fertilizer, whether it also has 50% release or not, whether it has phosphorus or not, et cetera. And they were, you know, they said whenever it passes, please just let us know, bring us signs. They actually requested 10. We were only considering giving two per store.
Thank you. My question would be, if you're getting such buy-in from retailers asking for multitudes, what's the logic by making it a mandate if the stores actually are interested in participating in this type of program?
Well, they have no option not to hang them if we put it on an ordinance. Right now, we could still hang them and see whether they will do it or not, but in this way, you know, we just bring them and they can hang the signs by the fertilizer and the consumer has the decision of what they purchase or not.
Thank you.
They're not going to stop the sale.
How much staff time do you see the county going around to visit each one of these locations to make sure that the signs are up in the proper fashion?
We really haven't addressed that. Carolina's research, she checked with a number of the other communities that have adopted ordinances like this and they actually mail the signs and they have involvement of the community to let them know whether there are compliance issues. So, you know, at the moment, we don't plan to have a lot of workforce out there checking on whether the signs are posted.
Thank you.
If that's needed, you know, we can look at that down the road.
And finally, and I might have misspoken, so I apologize at that, what is the enforcement mechanism when, when a retailer does not participate with this government mandate?
Thank you for asking that and I may defer to the county attorney, but this would, this revised ordinance would go into the fertilizer section of the existing code. And so there are enforcement provisions in Section 46-347 and penalties in 46-348 that are in your agenda packet. And I believe that that's a maximum fine of $500, but it references, it's consistent with the rest of the county code.
And it references code enforcement as well.
Thank you. So will we offer any type of leeway? Often fertilizer is outside, sold outside, you know, we have inclement weather, whether it's laminated or not, you know, things do fly out, fly off. You know, how, from a code enforcement standpoint, how will that, how will that work or will we just, you know, I imagine Lowe's, it's $500, it's not a big deal, but to smaller businesses, $500 could be, you know, quite a bit of money. So how will we handle that?
So all the signs would be weatherproof and the idea is to have grommets so they can be attached with tie wraps to, you know, whatever makes sense for that store's presentation. I, you know, I can't imagine that there wouldn't be a first-time warning kind of situation. This isn't, this isn't about penalties, this is about getting information posted for the consumer. So, you know, unless we saw a trend or a pattern in not posting the information, I don't, I don't see why we would want to go down the penalty route.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lober?
A few thoughts. First, I want to give a shout out, there's apparently an ACE in D1 that stopped selling fertilizer altogether during the period of time in which it's not permitted to be applied. Now, I'm not asking that other folks do that. If they want to, God bless them, that's great, but I, I think there's a difference between regulating a business in a more aggressive, heavy-handed approach and regulating a business only insofar as it's necessary to increase consumer knowledge. We oftentimes, not at the local level at least, but at the federal level with certain products, we have requirements of a statement of a country of origin. You'll see that on a lot of things, made in China, made wherever it might be. And it's not to burden the manufacturers, the fabricators, it's to make sure that the folks that are buying are well-informed. You see disclaimers on a lot of things indicating how they have to be used or how they're implied to be used. Now, some of that certainly is for liability, but it's also to increase consumer knowledge when you're talking about something that may not be patently evident to the average person that walks in. I can tell you, when I moved to Brevard County in 2010 or 2011, whatever it was now, I didn't know about a fertilizer ordinance here. I just don't fertilize my lawn because I've never needed to and I've never thought it was something that's beneficial, especially if you're using reclaimed or well water. But had I had a lawn that I thought needed fertilizing, I wouldn't have known years back that there was anything illegal about it. I don't think the average citizen comes here and pulls the municipal code or the county code to determine what is and isn't permissible. I think that's kind of an unrealistic expectation to have of just about anyone and, you know, me as an attorney, not having known that when I moved here, I think that would suggest, if anything, that the average person who's not inclined to sit and read through the laws is going to be certainly no more likely to read through the county code. So I think something like this, you know, it's a good step. I think that we have a compelling need in that the lagoon obviously has not been going the direction that we've wanted it to over a period of years. I remember that Virginia mentioned at the workshop that we had this past week that several or multiple commissioners approached her about this specific idea. I'll throw myself under the bus if people are upset, I was one of the commissioners. I imagine based on this being a D4 item, that Mr. Smith was another commissioner. I don't know if there were additional commissioners, but this is something where you're talking about zero expense to the businesses and you're increasing consumer knowledge, not in some artificial way or some way that's really not going to realize a result. I think you're going to change people's perception of what is and is not permissible based on this, just so that they're aware of what the law is. A lot of times, people talk about the law being unknown and people not being on notice as to what the requirements are. This helps with exactly that. So, you know, I don't have a problem with increasing consumer knowledge when there's a major benefit in doing so. So I'm certainly supportive of this, although I do understand where you're coming from. And, you know, had this been something more onerous on the businesses, I would have been right behind you.
All right, no further discussion? So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobia voting nay. Ms. Mildred Holder? Hi, can you give us your name and address, please?
I'm Mildred Holder, 598 Grant Street, Cocoa, Florida, 32926. And I'd just like to say thank you for calling me. When I came here this morning, I did not have an agenda. As I read over your agenda, something stuck out in my mind that I've been going over and asking questions. And I just wanted to make this proposal, ask some questions today concerning the renovation of the Cocoa West Community Center. I see you're doing a great work out there. I don't know what's going on inside the building, but once it is completed, my concern is, will there be a visionary in there to implement some programs that will draw our young peoples, get them off the streets, that they can find something of interest that will cause them to want to achieve something higher than just going around shooting cars with paintball machines and doing other little devilish things? And if we can reach these young peoples now through that community center, this is my concern, who will be in there that is a visionary that can ask and implement some programs that will interest our young peoples and even our older ones too? I'm sure there are some things that can be implemented. That's my question for today. Now, thank you for hearing me. And Commissioner Pritchett, we would like to invite you to come to some of our homeowners' meetings.
I would love to come.
I will have the president to contact you because we are interested in the community, seeing it vitalized and living up to its potential. We've got some great peoples out there, some great homeowners, and they care about their homes. So you will be getting a call. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ellen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Ellen Donner, Director of Parks and Recreation, Brevard County. The renovations that are currently ongoing were funded by CDBG monies. It's a two-phase project and we hope to be open relatively soon before summer, I believe is what the target is. And thank you very much, Ms. Holder, for the input. I will get with the central area manager and the coordinator of that center and we will definitely take a look at your request.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item F-21. Do you want the public comment first, Commissioner Tobia, or do you want to speak first? Okay. I see now that the card says questions only. Would you prefer just to answer questions if?
That's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And pardon me with a little bit of the background here, but we have a commissioner that is on board now that wasn't on board last time. Mr. Weiner came with us. So there is a question, I just have to provide a little bit of background here for Commissioner Lober. Of course, sunshine precludes me from having that. But on July 14th of 2018, after I questioned whether a qualified target industry wage waiver was necessary, you made several comments. Those comments included, if it's not necessary, why is the state saying they need it? That was one. B, we do not make the rules, we work with the state. When the state says a waiver is needed, we get that waiver, another quote. The third was, these are conversations that take place and they do not approach each other with lawyer's letters. And when I pointed out that Brevard needed, never received documentation from the state, you pointed out the agency was Enterprise Florida. I'm a strong believer in the Reagan doctrine of trust but verify. So I decided to check whether these statements had any basis in reality, these comments or these conversations with the state. Two weeks later, on July 28th of 2018, I made a public records request of Enterprise Florida and asked for, quote, "all non-exempt records of communication, including email notes and phone logs between Enterprise Florida and the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast regarding waivers of the wage requirement for qualification target industry," Florida Statute, Section 288.106, "whether it be a general discussion or relating to a specific project during a two-year period between July 17th and July 27th of 2018." I also asked for certain search terms such as qualified target industry and your last name, Weiner. So my question is this, how many records do you think I received with communications between Enterprise Florida and you or anyone in your office regarding qualified targeted industry wage requirements?
For the record, Commissioner, right after that meeting that you attribute the remarks to, I sent the entire commission information, including an email correspondence that came from the state. I was not anticipating questions about this because it is not.
It's a, how many, I have the public record, I'll help you out. The answer is zero. So you'd stated to this commission that you had spoken with Enterprise Florida and a public records request over a two-year period indicated that that was false. There were no emails, there were no phone calls, there were no letters of communication. So my question is this, you've made numerous less than credible statements to this board. How can we trust you with any information you currently bring to us?
Well, you made some misstatements yourself. First of all, I did not say there was written communication. There were telephone communications and telephone communications would not show up in a public records request, to my knowledge. I'll defer to the county attorney on that point. Secondly, I cannot take responsibility for the level of compliance that Enterprise Florida brings to your request. I did, however, provide, as I said earlier, to each and every one of you a communication right after it because I didn't have with me the numbers and I explained. And I also included an explanation from Enterprise Florida, although technically it was from the Department of Economic Opportunity. And so you know, you know, Commissioner, if you read that email, that there was communication on this subject between me personally and the state.
To be very clear, my, my public records request said, and I quote, "all non-exempt records of communication, including email, notes, and phone call logs." So you better believe that, and that's what you did say and that's why I specifically included it. And I have the public records request where it was absolutely blank. There were, sorry, there were 100 and some pages, but there were no mentions of that.
How do you account for the email that I provided you and the other commissioners directly after that meeting? If the information you have is accurate, where is the failure here? It's not on my part, it's on the EDC's part, there was at least that one email that they failed to provide. Is that correct? Do you understand, do you recall the email I'm referring to?
Do I recall the email that you said?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was going with a, I was going with the public records request as they have absolutely, you have incentive to say, I'm not an expert of email chains or anything like that. I am a fan of public record requests and the state, the state of Florida has no incentive. Obviously, you have incentive to CYA, but certainly Enterprise Florida does not and provided me, again, that that email record or that communication does not exist.
Commissioner, do you recall the email I sent to the entire commission? I don't know if Mr. Lober was on at that point, that had as a part of it, an explanation to some of the questions you raised and attached to it, an email communication about the subject you are inquiring about, that proves the information that you have is inaccurate in some way. I did not respond to that request. I suggest respectfully that this request be directed to the person you requested it of, not to me.
To be clear, to be clear, to be clear.
To be clear, I did not respond to the public records request.
No, no, sorry, to be clear, the, the public records request was not you. The public records request was not on the EDC because you're a private organization. We do not have the ability to find out a whole bunch of information despite the fact that we, taxpayers, provide you with a $1.4 million grant. However, the, the public records request was between the EDC and Enterprise However, the public records request was between the EDC and Enterprise Florida, and I got back zero. So now...
From Enterprise Florida.
From Enterprise Florida, which is the statement that you pointed out that you had that discussion with.
And I'm going to say at this point, asked and answered. I don't know why they didn't turn up, the one email that I am aware of. I think that's a question best directed to them. I will say, generally speaking, these communications on issues like this tend to be verbal. Now, I don't know what the state's procedures are for cataloging phone calls. Those are questions I do think are best asked of Enterprise Florida.
I will certainly go back and question the authenticity of the alleged email that took place between the...
You are not actually... Are you questioning, sir, whether the email I forwarded was authentic or not?
Absolutely. The response I got back through a public records request said there was not one. So the information I have from the state says there was absolutely not one. So you're saying there's...
But you have, in the interest of good faith here, sir, you have an email, or should, in your possession that indicated that what you were told by the state had to be incorrect with respect to that, at least that one instance, because that email wasn't an email that I wrote. It was an email I wrote with an attachment, and it came from either DEO or EFI. So you had to know of the existence of at least one. Now, why they didn't know the existence of that one or didn't catch it, I can't answer for them.
I will, I'll tell you what I will do. I will be more than willing to forward you the entire packet that I got back from...
Sir, I believe you. I believe you. I hope after this, you might take...
And I will go back, I will go back and question...
I will forward to the rest of the commission the email that I sent, and we'll send it to you again.
And I will go, and I will go back and question the public records.
Thank you.
Because if you sent it, they should have, there's a date on it.
The email was sent to me. I sent, I took the email, and I sent it to you.
Yeah, I get it. But if it was sent between you and a state agency, the state agency should have that record.
Yes, they should.
And we will go from there.
I agree.
Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Is this a D-3 or a D-5 location for this business?
West Melbourne. I'm not sure exactly where it sits on the board.
Okay. This is one where I'm somewhat ambivalent for different reasons than Commissioner Tobias. May I ask what your thoughts are with respect to this? Sorry for putting that spot...
It's a tax abatement. It's pretty, it's pretty simple. I was satisfied with the information provided. I do recall that email, and I highly doubt that you would fake an email from the state agency. Whether or not you agree with what we approved, the reality is it did occur. And if they're omitting that from their public records request, I wouldn't be necessarily shocked that they wouldn't provide a phone log, you know, based on a public records request either. Maybe they don't keep those records, I'm not sure, but I don't have any issue with this. I mean, we discussed it at length before. You know where my heartburn lies. It lies with cash incentives, and this is not one of those items, so...
I understand.
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. Yeah, my intention is to defer to you since it's in your district, and I'm ambivalent about it regardless, so that's where I'm at.
Well, can I, may I ask, is there a question I can answer to help you through the ambivalence?
Sure. Well, I mean, it's, I don't know if this is one of those instances, respectfully, where if you're getting what you want, maybe stop talking at that point. But my ambivalence, if you look at the, at the actual proposal, it talked about the number of new jobs and them anticipating it. My question is, is more toward how they come up with those particular projections and really what we have that locks them into that. And I understand it's a tax abatement, so if they don't produce it, then they don't get the abatement. But I'm always somewhat skeptical when it comes to things that are projections that at least, at least on the surface, appear to originate from folks that stand to benefit from those projections being rosier than they otherwise might be. So it's...
It's a, it's a good question because I, as, over the years, I've often wondered how a business can make that projection reliably, which I think is what you're saying. Nonetheless, they need to understand two things, and they do understand two things as they go through the process. A, that if they intend to pursue the incentive, they must make a projection. And B, that there's a penalty for misprojecting. And in the course of conversations, we've had times where we've explained that to them many times, and so they do the very best they can. And I would say that by and large, most companies project somewhat conservatively.
That's interesting. And I'm not trying to debate you in the coming of the year, but I would think it would be the other way around, but obviously...
Well, the motivation is to overinflate, but the penalty for inflation is severe, and we explain that to them.
Right.
I mean, if you promise and under-deliver, you're penalized. If you under-promise and over-deliver, that might be a good strategy.
I understand where you're coming from. I don't know that I'd agree that they're penalized, they're just not given the full benefit of what they otherwise would achieve. So in a sense, they're just not getting that positive incentive, which is, in my mind, different than having a negative incentive or a disincentive. But be that as it may, as I said, I'm in support based on the fact that it's in our chair's district. She's in support of it. And I will just put on the record, because again, there is an issue with sunshine. I don't like the concept of handing money over, but I am amenable to considering tax abatements when appropriate. Doesn't mean each and every one of them. If I'm ambivalent, and if there's something in a particular commissioner's district, my intention's probably to go with what their inclination is. So if it were in Commissioner Tobias's district, I can tell you on this item, if nothing changed with the district it was located in, I would not be supporting it. Obviously, in my district, it's, it's going to be totality of the circumstances, but I just want to put that out there, and, you know, I do appreciate you coming up here. Obviously, you know, I don't have the benefit of knowing the exchanges that took place prior to my having been put on the commission, so I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I will tell you that, in having spoken with you, I think shortly following the election, so end of November, beginning of December, thereabouts, you know, I didn't have any concerns in terms of your being candid and truthful with me. But again, I'm not going to say yea, nay, or anything about exchanges that I'm simply not familiar with because I've never seen those documents and those emails. So I'll stay out of that, at least for the time being. Thank you.
Mr. Vate?
Thank you. I did want to address one item rather briefly that may alleviate some of the concern, and that is, you know, in the past, there've been discussions about what was statutorily required and then what was submitted by the company asking for the abatement in their application. And so there was some lack of perhaps clarity on at least some of the board's part. And so I did very recently have a conversation with Linda Weatherman, who's a, obviously who heads the EDC. And we are looking at not only coming back to the board with things that address the contract situation with EDC, but in this particular process, have an additional document which commits the company receiving the tax abatement to what was put in the application. Now, she and I had that conversation two weeks ago. I think that will further address Commissioner Loeb's concern, but she was very much on board in favor of looking at, you know, what is appropriate in that scenario to address exactly that issue relative to the clarity.
Right. I appreciate it. May I have just a brief?
Commissioner Pritchett?
I apologize.
I just want to say 35 jobs with an average rate, rate of 73,500. I think it's phenomenal. We lived through the hard times, and you and I both had to govern cities when we were just crashing economically, and people weren't able to feed their families, and we were just fighting for jobs. And so I think we could run into a danger now that things are getting better that we quit being hungry. And I think it's real important to stay hungry because the statistics I got last year with the state of Florida population was still going down, but Brevard's counties is going up, and our economy's recovering. And we're a little bit different because some cash incentives, I'm good with, but I think we have to be very careful with that, too, and that's from being a accountant, always looking for the return on investments. But I think this is kind of a no-brainer, especially since there's the kind of what's called a clawback in it. If they don't need it, then some of this is pulled away. But I'm very excited for District 5 getting 35 more jobs at this type of wage. I think it's phenomenal, and I just want to thank you guys for keeping an eye out for these types of things. And sometimes it's seed money for these new companies trying to get going, and they would never be able to grow and expand, you know, and it's only for a couple of years, and they're off and running. And hopefully, they'll be around 30 years from now, still getting jobs to our grandkids so they don't move out of the area. So I'm on board with this. I'm excited. This is a good one, good jobs, and I'm in.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question on this BK industry. Did I read it right? Is that $16,914 in net revenue per year?
That is the annual taxes on personal property estimated.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that again? I thought I read the net revenue increase...
Total revenue to the county is estimated to be that amount annually.
Okay. So $16,914 per year, net revenue, estimated?
Yes, and that assumes that the, well, we're noting, that that assumes that the ABT is recommended to the commission, which it has not yet been, at 100% for 10 years. There's a scoring system which the committee that makes the recommendation follows. They're not, it's not rule-bound, but there's guidance on that. So it could theoretically come back at eight years, or 80%, or six years. I don't, I don't know what they'll decide, but that assumes the maximum, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just one thing for Commissioner Tobias' consideration. If you were to in the future bring forth a motion that in some way would reasonably increase the record-keeping and reporting requirements on the EDC in exchange for continuing to receive county funding, for instance, basically making some provision akin to the equivalent of a Chapter 119 request where they'd have to reply to it, you'd probably find me rather supportive of that. So if that's something that you're interested in, I'll just tell you, you have one less vote to count on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. And I, just before we take a vote on that, I found that email, I mean, I found one of them. I mean, some of them are pretty old, and I think they get archived, but I found one from the Department of Economic Opportunity from July the 25th, and it may have even been sent before that of 2018. It talks about the job requirements and stuff like that. So I don't know if we can forward that, Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair? Thank you. Mr. Weiner came before, I can't find that email. I'm sure you sent it. I can't, I can't find it. But it, he, Mr. Weiner came before this board on July 14th. So I, my question was, he made a statement that he had a converse, or an email there, an email exists. Again, I haven't seen it. We'll find it if you, if you sent it. You know, I'm working on it. It would, if he had that conversation, that email would have taken place between him and a state agency prior to the meeting, not after. I have no question that Mr. Weiner quickly called over there after the meeting, but he's made the assessment that he contacted them.
This looks like it was, could you verify this, like, per our discussion, as how this email looks? Because he may, maybe requested it for our benefit.
Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, that's how it appeared to me.
After Commissioner Tobias raised the issue, because these things typically are discussed, not put in writing, I asked them to explain what the procedure was. And so that email was, to me, was generated after the date of the test.
Because I'll just read the first couple of lines. "It was a pleasure speaking with you. As we discussed, the QTI program requires that new jobs," so it sounds like it's just verification. But that was from July 24th. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes for one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. Chet Ellsworth? And after Chet, Charles Tovey? Hi, if you could just state your name and address, please.
Chet Ellsworth, 989 North Highway, A1A, Number 2, Indy Atlantic, Florida, 32903.
Very thorough.
I was here last meeting and was proposing a vote on that CARE letter that was sent to the commissioners. And I am here to address and bring forward some, some of the most interesting things that have happened since that, that date, and put before you some items that are unpopular. In the national scheme of things, the, our congressmen up in Washington have decided to do some more investigations. And during that time, we paid our taxes, April 15th. In those taxes are how we pay for those investigations. What taxpayers don't realize is the hidden costs of these investigations and when corruption occurs and when the, on the national scene, we have an attack on our rule of law. The taxes paid included attorney-privileged taxes, things that most taxpayers don't think about. When there is corruption, in other words, when those privileges are abridged, those becomes corruption taxes, and they are hidden taxes in our system. That brings us back down to my first, my April 9th letter, asking for a vote on, on that letter sent by CARE, which is an attorney-driven corporation from Georgia. And I now want to bring up the fact that over the past two months, I have requested from the circuit court clerk investigations over other attorney-driven corporations that are abridging attorney privileges in our court system here in Brevard County. I am provo, provoking and saying that we are, we have a rule of law problem here. And that brings us back down to my, I've got 18 seconds. I've got a letter here that provides that, that those requests to the, for investigation from the county clerk be switched over to the sheriff, and for reasons that I have written out here. I've got two seconds. Would you like, can I give them to you?
Sure. And I'd like to look into more of what you're talking about, and probably a conversation much longer than a meeting would provide.
Well, I was hoping that. I got no response from my presentation. I had given you those letters last week.
But regarding the whole CARE and the whole, how they tried to, you know, stifle the First Amendment of that other organization, the fact that this commission didn't take action should, should speak to how we feel about that, you know? That, that organization's been meeting here for a very long time, and we'd never received a complaint until that organization decided they didn't like one of the speakers. So the fact that this commission didn't act upon it should tell you that we support the First Amendment and...
I suspect there's much, much deeper, and I would be able to help on that.
Okay.
I've got this...
Commissioner Loeb?
Just real briefly, my office had communications with some folks that wanted comments about your prior, not your prior item specifically, but the topic of your prior item. I did give some comments. If you put in the word charisma and my last name on Google, the first link that comes up should do a pretty good job of summarizing where I'm at with respect to that. Charisma and my last name. Just put it in Google or whatever search engine you want, because there are some comments floating out there. I just don't want to...
I'm sorry now. You put in Mr. Loeb...
You just, just put in Loeb and charisma, and you'll, you'll have it, in all likelihood. I just did it now, and it's the first search result that's returned. So it pretty well summarizes my thoughts with respect to the CARE request.
Okay. I'd be glad to talk to anybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Tovey? And after Mr. Tovey, George Rosenfield?
Trying to think of what I, oh, yeah, on my card, Heritage and the Lagoon. I'd like to first say that I'm a general, general practitioner. I didn't want to devote all my time into one subject or one category, so I'm a broad-spectrum advisor, I guess. I do want to emphasize again the relations between Palm Shores and the Lagoon, as Palm Shores uprising led to the downfall of the Lagoon. And if you give me time, I have... Shores uprising led to the downfall of the Lagoon, and if you give me time, I have more information, and I can show you on a map how it is related to the Lagoon, and what I do to, is, um, what I do to the Lagoon is probably one of, if not the most important thing, and I appreciate all the other help and all the other things that people are doing, but what I do is not recognize, and it's immediate results bettering the Lagoon, and you should see by now a positive turn to the Lagoon already, and still got to the end of May, so you, um, Brevard can have a nice June vacation and enjoy the Lagoon. The other thing was, and I, I don't like contention and being in arguments about who's first and this and that, but I have more confirmation about my, my great-great-grandparents, who were the first settlers of Brevard County before, I think it was Brevard County, and how they had to clear the land and cut down palm trees to make their house, they made it out of the palm trunks was the support, and the palm fronds was the roof, a thatch hut with no windows, only a door. Also, like some help in my personal matters that I've been crying about and complaining about for years, and another, and why I switch things, because I don't have a lot of time, and I have to cut things short, so I can cover them at another time, but, um, one of the most important things right now that we can do to help the Lagoon is increase our sweeper services, but not the sweeper, use the vacuums, the vacuum trucks all along, uh, U S One and the adjacent west part of Brevard County, if we increase them, now, up until June, the rain season will save a lot, and I do have my own blend of fertilizer, and I have a lot more to say, and hope you had a nice Easter, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenfield.
My name is George Rosenfield, I live in Suntry. I have a copy of a letter from my professor of economics at Florida State University, considering the cost of county residential development. I received this letter in, in September of two thousand and seventeen from a Mr. McMillan of North Merritt Island, after the county approved of housing development in North Merritt Island, to which I objected as an envi, on an environmental basis. I gave it to the commission then, in consideration of future decisions, but it did little, little if any, good. I'm doing it again because of two, it's, it's two commissions later. If I wait two more years for the next time, I'll only be ninety-five years old. I'll, I'll read only a few pertinent sentences, and then hand the, um, uh, letter to a commission person, this chairperson, this nominee, for later distribution to the members of the About the fiscal impacts of residential development, the accepted wisdom on this among academic economists is that taxes levied on residential development do not cover the cost of providing government services to the development. Multifamily development tends to impose the highest fiscal cost on municipalities. Well, that, that was a big thing, that's the big thing, commercial, oh, commercial development, uh, more than pays for itself, that is very good for a county. And that's about it, and, and I just want to bring it up, I think it should be considered in future decisions.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores, I'll just bend down.
You can pull it up a little bit, there you go, you won't break it.
Um, as you know, in South Patrick Shores, we have a dump, an old military dump from World War II and post-World War II, under our community. I was unaware of that when I purchased my home. This is not a situation specific to Sandra Sullivan, this involves our community. It runs basically from Pineda Causeway down to about Berkeley, and it also unpacks west, towards the Indian River Lagoon. I have come here in the past and talked about the contaminants that go down to the heads of the canals and into the outfalls, which I had requested be tested at a Sable Lagoon meeting, has still not been tested, so I'm very still concerned about the dredging of that material in, um, in, in west Florida, in St. Pete, they had an issue where the arsenic concentrated, and they ended up costing the county one million dollars to clean it up, and we're talking, our levels are not at the commercial level, they're at the, uh, not the residential, the commercial level, that's not what I'm here to talk about. What I'm here to talk about today is that in nineteen ninety-one, there was an investigation, and, um, the FUDs was not, they did not get the FUDs eligibility to clean up the dump, because they said that we were, that the military did not use the dump and did not own the land on that dump. Uh, we since know that that is not correct, we know that the, they took the map and they obscured the top half, and they took it off, and they hid the fact that there are roads down into the dump. We also know that from records requests, that they owned part of South Patrick Shores. If there had been oversight in nineteen ninety-one, that would not have been permitted. What I'm here tonight is, today, this morning, is to ask the commission to have the mapping division map the foretaking of land onto a map, so we know exactly what the military owned with the FUDs eligibility. The FUDs eligibility is, is right now, they're, they've done their initial findings letters, going through an internal review, and it will go up to Washington very soon. This is a very time-critical matter, which is why I found your meeting today, dashed down here today, and to make a request that the mapping division take these four legal descriptions and map them on a map, so we know exactly what they owned, and also, I'm very grateful to Scott Ellis's office, who's doing some records requests, helping me out of Orlando to see what land that they leased, and that's what I came here for.
Commissioner Loeb.
Couple of questions, one for you and then one for staff, if I may. Just in the interest of full disclosure, we are Facebook compadres.
Yeah.
So, I've, I've seen a lot of what you've posted about this issue on there, could you take just thirty seconds and, and let the commission know about some of the items that have been dug up in the area, because I, I thought that, out of perhaps everything that you've put online, has been the most surprising or the most interesting, depending on how you want to look at it.
Thank you. Um, I own a half an acre, it's a beautiful property. Um, I had no idea I had a, was, my property was on the edge of this dump. Um, a few weeks ago, I dug up an airplane instrument panel with all of the instruments behind it, I have dug up, um, very electric iceboxes that are encapsulated in lead, I have dug up the old tracks that they would have laid down before they built the runways for the aircraft to land on it, um, there's been pieces of lead, different types of metal, there's been, um, radio equipment with radio tubes, um, it just, there have been axles and transmissions, uh, it's just, this stuff is everywhere. The other day, I was repairing an irrigation head, and I ended up digging up some stuff, and my gloves tore, I usually wear leather gloves, and these were, these were latex, and they tore, and my hand blistered here and here, from whatever I came in contact with. The EPA has come to my yard and tested, um, my yard is above the health limit on DDT, arsenic, and PCBs, and we need your help.
And then just briefly to, to staff, what would the, um, the cost or the amount of time that would need to be expended in rough estimate be in order to, to do what she's asking?
We haven't completed an assessment of that, so I can't really answer the question. Um, the, however, I will say that we frequently get requests from the public to perform services for them and in their behalf, that are really private matters, that aren't our services that we typically provide, or within our scope, um, and, uh, so we are often in position of telling folks that we are unable to help them.
Could I respond to that?
Up to the chair.
Sure.
This is really not a Sandra Sullivan issue, this involves all of South Patrick Shores, and had this been addressed in nineteen ninety-one, they never would have gotten away with saying that this was not land that they used and not land that they owned, and we, you know, I'm very grateful to Scott Ellis's office, there are four taking of the lands documents. The legal descriptions are quite straightforward, other than one, one is more entailed, and I recognize reading this one, it was over our head, but this is not pertaining to my property, this is pertaining to actually, they, they owned Government Lot One, part of Government Lot Two, Government Lot Three, Government Lot Four, these are old maps, they go back to nineteen ninety-one was the last map, they had government lots. This land now goes all the way down to Satellite Beach, and there was a, I want to say this is a very important detail, there was on the EPA Epic Study, a drainage channel all the way down to Satellite High School, so you're probably aware, a student died two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, of brain cancer, a tenth or eleventh grader at Satellite High School, and as you're aware from the news, there's been a high number of, of, like in, in Dr. Julie, who had another surgery this week, a lump removed, six-point-one centimeters, the, her class, there's more than twenty people from her class with cancer. There was a drainage trench, drainage channel from the dump, all the way down to Satellite High School, and it, this is a broader issue than just my property, this is a broader situation that involves from South Patrick Shores, from Pineda Causeway, all the way down to the land that they own, which was all base housing down to, just before you get to.
And I'm sympathetic to your cause, strictly because it's a, it's a potential and probable health issue, and that's, that's where you sort of won me over, because it's not, you know, you disputing with a neighbor, you disputing with a private company, this has to do with, uh, with an old dump, and, and some historical data that you may be finding near impossible to get your hands on, so, I mean, I would be okay if, if we helped you with this, I mean, considering it's a public health issue, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but...
I'm, I'm on board with that as well.
Commissioner Tobias.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I guess this would be a question to Ms. Bentley. If, if we were to ameliorate this situation, how does that put us, what, what, does that put us in any position for the neighbors and then the larger area, if we have no estimated cost for one site to, to, to fix it?
I think she's just looking for maps, I don't think she's asking us to analyze anything.
You know, there's a lot of research that would have to be done, I have no idea what something like that would cost, and the level of detail that you'd have to go into to have a reliable report, and I think what Commissioner Tobias is concerned about is our liability once we undertake a, a job, we have to, we have to perform it well. So, it's so preliminary, I really can't give you a good answer as to the liability.
Could I add to that? Scott Ellis's office has done the, the records, uh, and found the records for the taking of the lands, so we have the legal descriptions of the lands, all we're looking is the transposers onto a map, so we know the areas, and all I'm asking is that this commu, this information, it can be just communicated directly to the Corps of Engineers, I'll provide the contact for the Corps of Engineers, because it's related to their determination of FUDs eligibility, that's it.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Okay, this sounds reasonable, but, um, Commissioner Tobias's hesitation, what I would like to do is if you'd give us about a week or so to go and, and start doing some research, that we can do some brainstorming, maybe we come back with some things that we can do as a commission, um, maybe to get you some information with, without getting into, um, an area where we, we probably shouldn't be.
Do we have to come to another meeting to come to a decision? The only reason why I'm asking is, the FUDs eligibility has done their initial letter of findings, it's going through an internal review, it's very time-critical, the next step is it will go up to Washington for approval or denial.
Maybe in the next meeting we can, or, or we can get in touch with, with county staff, but I, I would like to go start doing some research on this, some things that you're asking, and, and ask some questions, but I, I think it sounds reasonable, but if, if you'd allow me to do that for a period of time, Commission, then I, I think that, um, maybe we can figure out something.
All right, thank you for your consideration.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I just want to weigh in a little bit. This is my district, and I and probably fifteen or twenty others of the county, I got to visit Sandra's property, what was it, September a year ago?
September fourth.
And it was quite eye-opening to me, because she had hired somebody to, um, use one of those, whatever it's called, the, yeah, metal detector or whatever it was, to go around her property, and he outlined all the parcels that he could find, and there were lots of orange lines, one of them looked like an airplane wing, but at that time, what she was asking was way beyond us, we don't have any control of this, this was ostensibly a government-created mess, and so I told her what I could do is I could attempt to get Congressman Posey and Rubio, and then Senator Nelson involved, which I did, and they in turn, and I also reached out to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, um, they deferred to the U S government, again, because it's not a state issue, it's not our issue, even though it's in our backyard, and those three offices did get involved, and they have had, as you mentioned, the, who came, the D E P or?
EPA and the D P, D E P have been to the yard, and Congressman Posey has been absolutely incredible, he has been absolutely incredible.
There, we've, we've mobilized the forces that can do something about this, I kind of feel helpless, I would like to do more, but it's really not within our purview, but I think it would be a good idea, for her peace of mind, if nothing else, if we could provide that information regarding the maps.
It just acts as a check some balances, because of what happened in nineteen ninety-one, they were not, in my opinion, based on the evidence ethical.
Commissioner Loeb.
In terms of the subsequent meeting or future meetings, if you want, with respect to this particular issue, what I would suggest you do, and you're certainly welcome to come here again, if that's what you'd like to do, by all means, I'm not telling you you're not welcome, that's the last thing I'd say, uh, but you may want to reach out to your commissioner, uh, because if you have information you want to provide him, if it's something that he thinks would benefit the commission, rather than having you sit through potentially a six-hour meeting, you can get it on that way, if...
I did, can I answer that? I did call him, and I did call his office, and I spoke to, um, Ms. Grum, who's in charge of mapping, this morning, and she said she spoke to his office, and that he had advised, that Pat Woodward had advised them to not do this.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll tell you just the last bit on this, if you'd like, either through his office, I'm sorry, for volunteering for things, or if your, your schedules won't, won't work for whatever reason together, um, just because I've, I've seen enough that you've posted on this, I don't feel that I would have that much to catch up on, uh, I'm happy to sit down with, with you, and perhaps someone from Natural Resources, um, I just ask you give me a little while, because there's, there's a lot of other things that, that I, I have to get to in the immediate future, uh, but if you give me a few weeks, I'm happy to sit down with you and, and someone from Natural Resources, I, I can't promise you what the outcome's going to be, but I'm, I'm happy to sit down and, and at least see if there's something that can be worked out, but, um, as Commissioner Pritchett said, I, I think there needs to be a little time for folks to do some more due diligence on this.
Right, if I could leave you one question before I go, and that is something you can find out, if the FUDs eligibility comes back and they say no, and we have contamination in South Patrick Shores and down to, to Satellite Beach, who's then responsible to clean it up? It's above the health limit, so, and I would propose it's in your interest to help, that we make sure that this FUDs eligibility goes through.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is a question for Commissioner Smith, um, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't following as, as adeptly as, as I probably should have been, are you in favor, this being your district, are you in favor of these additional delineations going on the map that she is referring, referring to?
I don't think that's a problem.
You don't think that's a problem, um, and I understand Commissioner Pritchett's hesitation, because we're just hearing this, um, would, would either of you be amenable to, and I appreciate you coming here, we've seen you a couple times, I remember you brought a Tupperware tray of stuff last time, which was very interesting, I'm glad was on the other side of this rostrum, that we direct staff to go ahead and, and do this, seeing if there's no additional liability or no additional, uh, cost, I, I, I would hate to... I would hate to think that it takes us two weeks to find out that it's just transposing some numbers. And I wouldn't want you to come back because of that. If there were any types of liability that the county would be under, or any type of great expense, then I think it'd probably be appropriate for you to come back.
Well, I would suggest that you guys reach out to Virginia Barker, she was one of those people that was there. And she's done an awful lot of research into this, and so, she can probably fast-forward you with your information and your questions.
Yeah, but I think it would probably be, I mean, what this woman is asking for, am I wrong, is to get on the county map, to get some more delineation?
Yes, Scott Ellis's office has got us the legal documents, the historical documents of the taking of the lands by the United States of America. We just want to put those on a map and see exactly what they were in terms of the maps that, because the maps today are not in terms of government lot, one, two, three, and four, to put it on a map from that time to what lands they took and have it graphically represented.
So, assuming again that there's no great cost to this, and there's no liability that puts us in, I would have no problem making a motion to direct staff to, whatever Commissioner Lober has to say.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, if I may.
Go ahead.
Rather than directing staff to do it, since you did raise a valid concern over what this might do to us insofar as a liability and a cost perspective, I would direct that instead of, I would move that we, instead of directing them, that we authorize staff to perform this at the discretion of the county manager, because I think he understands our concerns. Or alternatively, we could say at the discretion of the county attorney.
Our county surveyor can probably give you an estimate of what this overlay might cost, so then you'd have the cost factor. And in the meantime, we could be looking at the issues that may be raised, if that might be an option.
Yeah, because if there is some massive concern that's raised in doing due diligence, I'd, rather than having to have it come back again, I'd rather give them a little bit of latitude, although I would definitely like to see this done. So, if you consider amending your motion, I'm certainly happy to support it.
And this may seem like a bit of a silly question, but is there any way to sort of put a legal disclaimer, like this is the best of our, to our knowledge, rather than, I don't know, I don't know how you do that?
We're going to have to take a look at exactly what she has and exactly what she really intends to have on the map.
Right. Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Sari, that's exactly what I was going to ask, if we could do, if that would help with the liability with the disclaimer. I think you hear everybody wanting to help with something. New idea for me, so I'm a researcher, so I want to ask staff all of the, what's good, what's bad, you know, where can we get a mediation on it? But Commissioner Tobias, I like your motion, if it is not going to be any cost relatively, you know, it'd be something to move with. But it might be better just to wait a week or so and get some information.
Could staff come back with a report to the board?
It might be good, huh?
Yeah, so, I'd like to amend, I think it probably closer to Commissioner Lober is authorize, what, staff to come back with a report detailing costs, liability?
I would just say at the discretion of either the county attorney or the county manager, at your preference.
Well, if they come back with a report, then it is back to our discretion, right?
If you want them to come back with a report, but I'm thinking if it's something simple, you may just authorize them to go out and do it. Up to y'all.
So, I have, let me bounce this, do we, how long would such a report, I have absolutely no idea, I have absolutely no idea. Is this something that we handled in a timeframe of two weeks?
I have no idea.
I don't know. Who can answer that?
We have no idea.
I think we can have it within a week, as far as the work effort to do.
It doesn't have to be comprehensive to the degree of insanity, it just needs to be an idea of what you think.
It would be an estimate of what we believe, based on what we think we know. And I have to stress, what we think we know, because there's a lot that we don't know, that, as to the level of effort to be able to accomplish this. If all we're doing is mapping the government lot lines, that might not be that much effort in 20, 40 hours of manpower, skilled, highly skilled manpower. It, but if it includes mapping out a great deal of the South Patrick Shores housing area or Satellite Beach, it's going to become a monumental task. It's going to be incredibly huge. And I don't have any idea at this point where I'm sitting, where we'll be.
I think they're mostly concerned about where that was, correct?
Right. So, three of the taking of the lands go things like the top one quarter of the top one half. The descriptions are pretty straightforward in that regard, on three of the taking of lands. And there are multiple descriptions in there, like it'll say all of Lot Number One. There's only one document that I've seen on the four taking of lands that is more complex, and that has to do with widening a road and the lands that they took on either side of it. That references some more detailed descriptions of what they took in the previous documents. So, there seems to be they referencing some more detailed knowledge than what was taken, what was denoted in the other three documents. There is some investigation, but I look at this and say, your opportunity cost here is, if we get the FUDS eligibility, the feds are paying for the cleanup. If we don't get that, the costs are so much higher. So, relatively speaking, this is a relatively small cost.
But the idea is, is you want basically the lines, the lot lines of where the property existed through the process, correct? I mean, we're not talking about mapping an entire city.
We're just talking about the original taking of the lands by the United States of America to ascertain what they owned.
Right.
Because in order to get FUDS eligibility, you have to show that they either owned or leased. Now, there is one part of Lot, Government Lot Two, that they did not own, but there are referenced at least documents. And Scott Ellis's office is assisting me with getting those documents out of Orlando. So, that part I'm dealing with. I've invested a huge amount of time into this for the sake of our community, but I appreciate everything that you can do to provide the, what I'm looking for is checks and balances to ensure that the other half are on us this time.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I, just from listening to this, we're also going to have to spend some time and see what FUDS is going to require, as far as their eligibility for what report we're going to have. So, Commissioner Tobias, if you're adjusting that motion to have staff come back with a report, my second will hold on that, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair, it would be to authorize staff to come back to a report by the May 7th commission meeting, giving you two weeks outlining costs as well as potential liabilities for the actions that she's requesting.
Commissioner Lober?
I think that may have just clarified it, but is the clerk on board with what he's moving to do? Okay, I know it's bounced back a little bit, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All righty. Okay, item, we have no public hearings, item I-1?
I-1 is the request for the board to appoint four committee members, qualified committee applicants, to the Program Selection and Management Committee.
I make a motion to appoint the members that are listed.
Second.
Every motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item J-1? Is that new, Lyley?
It is new for J-1 after we hear from over here. Hello, Madam Chairman. I'm Troy Post, and I'm with the North Bivard Economic Development Zone. And I'm here today because we have a request to approve a real estate sales contract for the purchase of property in the county-owned, excuse me, Spaceport Commerce Park, which is in Titusville. This is a park that was developed originally back in the early 1980s. And by ordinance 201308, and a copy of that is in the folder that's being passed out, the zone is given the ability to be the agent for negotiating real estate deals involving the land out there at the Commerce Park. The company that has made the offer is Merritt Precision Technologies, that's mentioned in the agenda report. The company is planning to acquire a five-acre lot. They would propose building about 20,000 square feet under roof, and they would employ in the future an additional 12 jobs above their current employment totals. The company originally came to the zone board several months ago with an offer of 25,000 acre. It was countered by the zone board at 30,000 acre, primarily by using as a guide a report that was prepared last summer, excuse me, by Clayton Roper Marshall, which is a real estate appraisal firm based out of Orlando, I believe. And their task was to come up with a market valuation of some of the remaining lots in the park, and using that as a guide in their recommendation of starting our process of trying to accelerate development and marketing of the park, coming in at 70 cents per square foot. So, this offer is consistent with some of those findings. And so, today we're asking for approval of the real estate contract.
Commissioner Lober?
A few thoughts and perhaps a couple of questions. I did meet with Mr. Post, I appreciate his having come out to my office to speak with me. When I spoke with him, though, what I was anticipating seeing on today's agenda was four acres at the price indicated, but now we have five acres. In looking through that report that he had referenced, which he was kind enough to provide me back when we met at my office, there was a, basically an estimate of 55,000 acre being an appropriate value for parcels from two to five acres. I don't know if that's inclusive of five or not. And then, from five to 12, an approximate retail, I'm sorry, approximate value of 35,000 an acre. So, I don't know, and I'm not saying that this is the case, but I wonder if the change from four to five acres was to make it closer to the 35,000 per acre, or if there was some misunderstanding at some point in the process previously. I will tell you that according to my staff, who was kind enough to, who've been kind enough to look into this at some level of detail, there was a somewhat recent, I don't know in the past week, month, or year, but somewhat recent sale nearby where property sold for over 70,000 an acre. And I'm not saying that we don't approve this, but I think that if we do approve it, we need to be mindful that this is probably markedly below, certainly, to make it more objective, this appears to be below what the actual market price would bear for property like this. So, the question that I have for the commission is what the appetite is of selling below-market value, and it's arguable how far below-market value it is, but certainly below-market value property for the purpose of incentivizing this type of business at this particular location. If the board thinks that that's appropriate, and it's that important to bring this type of business there, then by all means, you know, we should support it. In the alternative, though, if the goal is to get market value out of the land, I think we could do substantially better than this. So, you know, obviously, as I mentioned with the EDC item that came up earlier, I'm always a little bit hesitant when it comes to companies' projections as to how many jobs they'll create or how many additional jobs they'll bring in. But with something like this, there's really not much of a clawback that I've seen. If they don't produce the number of jobs that they're speaking of, they still get the land at a pretty sizable, I'd hate to call it a windfall, but a pretty sizable discount. So, again, it's something, I'm not really thrilled with it. I think it's nice to have businesses come in, but I just question the price that we're selling it at. I'm not saying we should sell it at 70-something thousand an acre. You know, I don't know that we need to go up to that point, but 30,000 an acre just seems to be rather low unless the goal in selling it at that price is to incentivize that particular type of business to come into that particular location.
Excuse me, if you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
You know, the zone and the county, we're not a private development firm. So, our interest is in, you know, trying to grow the commerce in the north end of the county. So, the use of a park like this, it's just trying to advance some of those economic development goals. We believe that the Roper report, you know, is a good and accurate understanding of what industrial sales have been in the area. Just a side note, the developer did come back and request an additional acreage, and it has to do with the way in which we're having to take an existing parcel and create the acreage that he needs for his development. And in talking to him and his builder, it became necessary to add an additional acre. So, that's why it's a little bit larger parcel. But this is a good tool for us to be able to, you know, again, drive commerce in the area. This is a company that does principally most of its work in the marine industry. That kind of advances our goal of diversification, trying to not be so dependent upon all the aerospace companies that we've got in the area, though they're certainly welcome and we appreciate what they do. So, we think it's a good tool to use in that regard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Lober, I'm with you on that. And it's so much fun going to these zone meetings with the people on there. It's probably my very favorite board, because the interaction, the conversations that they have, when the first amount came in for 25,000, which they've sold them for in the past when the economy was a little lower, they had some heartburn over, so they sent it, they did some negotiation, talked about the problems that are going to be on the property with stormwater and some things like that, that this company's going to have to take care of. This park out there is pretty fascinating, they set it up a long time ago, and we were trying to get businesses there, and during the decline, we just, we almost couldn't pay people to move in there. So, it is a better day with more of these companies coming in. There's still a lot of property out there to develop, but the initiative on this, like Troy just mentioned, is we became so dependent, our districts probably yours too, on the space program. When we had that collapse, I mean, we had a real problem. So, working real hard to get the diversity in there, this became a little jewel in our districts there to be able to get these companies in. I wouldn't mind going back soon and maybe start getting some market values that we go off instead of just the market valuations to give to the board for them to consider. But I think this one here is a good project, but I think that might be something served to move forward in, that we start working more on different appraisal values for these types of companies, because this land definitely has just a certain market that can move into this Commerce Park. But I would invite all of you guys, if you want, to go sit in one of these meetings, you'd really enjoy it, and we can either advertise it or promise not to talk. And I think you, this is just so much fun, listening to all these people interact, they're just so brilliant with the ideas they come up with and bounce off of each other. So, I'm in favor of this, so.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. And this report, Clayton Roper Marshall brings up an interesting valuation, and I understand they probably have limited number of sales, in fact, I think that's a condition here. But if you were to look at a four-acre sale at $55,000 an acre, that would be 220,000. And then, if you were to look at a five-acre sale at 35,000, that would be 175,000. So, if this is accurate, it would be cheaper to buy five acres, not per acre, but total, than it would actually be to buy four acres. In fact, doing the math real quickly, it would probably be almost cheaper to buy six acres than four acres. And again, I understand you're a steward of money, and you can't go out and get analysis over and over and over again. But assuming that that five acres is inclusive, then this valuation would make that at whatever that would be, one, what is that, 35? It would be about a discount of 25,000, $25,000.
If, Madam Chair, if I may, it's a fair point, certainly. One of the things we typically do when we meet with somebody, excuse me, who's interested in a site out there, is we try to understand what their building needs are and how they would orient their buildings on the site, to make sure that there's adequate land for not only the building, but also the parking areas, the stormwater retention, everything they'd have to keep on site. So, a project that had a need that really could fit on a two-acre site, we would not want to sell them a seven or eight-acre site. That's just not necessary, in order to kind of get into that price range where it might be cheaper. Again, it's an economic development tool, and it behooves us to make sure that when we develop these lots, that we're doing so, we're not compromising our ability to develop some additional projects out there.
Yeah, so, to follow up, I greatly appreciate Commissioner Lober's analysis, because I agree, but I think the benefit of the doubt should probably go with, given the condition of this analysis, Commissioner Pritchett. And I do want to thank Mr. Post for being so helpful with the explanation and providing all this documentation. So, I think the $25,000, it sounds like a fair incentive to bring out new jobs and new businesses to that area, and ultimately, this gets less land that we will have to manage and put it on to someone else's responsibility. But if you continue to work like this, Mr. Post, you're, you know, the jaw, the amount of space that you'll have to get out will continue to decrease. So, thank you so much for your help answering questions and your timeliness. So thank you so much for your help answering questions and your timeliness in that. So I will be voting in support of this, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just a question for Commissioner Pritchett. I, you know, again, I still have my reservations with respect to this. I think I've made them clear. I'm not going to be circular and go over them again. This is your district. If you tell me this is particularly important to you, I'll support it, but if it's not, I'm inclined to vote against it.
It's a good one. I've sat in through their meetings and listened to them banter. I think this is a great project, and I think it's going to be a great return on investment for this amount. I think they're really going to bring some tax dollars in.
Okay, fair enough. I'll support it.
All right. You made a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
J2 is requesting approval for the EAL program's support of an exchange of land between the state of Florida and a private landowner, Mr. Pinkerton.
I know Mr. Pinkerton is here. I don't know if you want to speak on this or if you just want to answer questions or... Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
A few items on this. First, I'm not clear on whether it's Tropical Group Investments that owns this property or if it's the Pinkertons that own the property. So if I may, I'll just bounce that.
I own the property.
You own the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how long have you owned that property?
End of December, I believe.
And then prior to your getting it, was it owned by Tropical Group or?
I don't know.
Because I was just concerned, when I looked at the agenda item, it said Tropical Group Investments has approached the EAL program with an exchange proposal. And when I looked, I didn't see you as an officer or an agent of Tropical Group, but I did see there was a conveyance, as you said, I think it was some point last year perhaps or the year prior. So I'm just, I want to make sure that whatever we do are accurate in terms of who owns the land and what we're supporting, because the way that this agenda item reads, it appears that Tropical Group is the owner of it, but you're saying that's not correct?
Correct. We closed, and I actually have the closing documents.
That's okay. No, I just, I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, we, I own the lots right on the proposed Oak and Shaw Avenue Road. I'm not sure it's, parcel ID is 29-37-26-00-513-517.
Now, let me...
And we're getting ready to finalize our contract with our home builder about our home.
Let me ask you, in terms of this property, I take it then that you approached the EAL program to propose this exchange?
I actually started by, when I saw it was the state of Florida, we want to do a family farm there. I have triplet seven-year-old boys, and knowing how boys get into trouble, we wanted to provide an area where everybody wants to be there while they're growing up to give them a good environment. So I approached the state of Florida about asking what those lands was, being, living in Colorado for a while, they have grazing right options. I asked about grazing rights, and they're like, no, we actually will sell that out if it's a benefit to the state and explain the program on the two-to-one advantage for the amount of acreage, being I would give them two acres for one acre of their land, and they would do a land exchange if the land was inside a habitat management area that they are trying to increase.
So let me ask you, in terms of the two-to-one advantage, I want to talk about that and about a related item as well. So it sounds like it's a benefit to the state in order to do the swap, but why is it then, if you're giving up so much land, why is it that you want to do this?
Because the land that they have is in an environmental area, so we can't really do anything with it, but the land behind it is going to be used for, we want to have a couple cows, a couple goats, and just basically to build my family's home. I grew up on a small farm. My wife grew up on a small farm. She's planning on stock, starting an aquaponics greenhouse garden to where we'll be able to do all of our fresh vegetables and everything through a organic, sustainable farming without any damage to the environment. And then we'll be having some small farm animals to have our own beef, possibly pigs if they don't smell too bad, chickens, eggs, and we want to become, you know, not self-sustainable, but really get back to how we grew up and teach our kids how to work and be real good, you know, be a worth ethic and a member of society.
So I've got perhaps a foolish question, but it's just not clicking for me.
Okay.
Why did you buy that land if you're now aware, perhaps you were aware at the time, I'm not sure, that there were issues with respect to developing and using it?
The land was purchased for the land trade.
Okay, so you bought it specifically in order to exchange it?
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Tobias, you have no comments or concerns through district?
Thank you. I asked staff about this, and first of all, to be clear, the value of the land that Mr. Pinkerton would be getting would be more than the land that he is providing to the state. However, it's the state's land, so that's a decision that Mr. Pinkerton would have to have with the state, and so there would be no detriment to Brevard County taxpayers. In fact, they're actually maybe an advantage because if at some point we were to manage the EAL's land, there would be continuity, and this would be in a contiguous area. So this actually could have a positive effect years down the road if we were to manage that. So while I'm generally, you know, less, even though I guess I, Mr., I just voted for a savings, for a private business, while I'm generally against the less-than-market value, I think probably this is a good exception, though I'm not asking anyone else's support. I think just because this is in my district, no extra measure should be given because I'm the commissioner of this district. I certainly will be voting for this. However, please, you know, come to your own conclusions. I just wanted to, I just wanted to emphasize why, how I came to the conclusion that I got to.
Commissioner Loeb?
And I appreciate you saying that. I think the only time that I can recall that I've not supported a particular commissioner with respect to a property issue in their district is when you said essentially the same thing in the past. That's the only one that comes to mind. Maybe there was another one, but I can't recall. What I'll tell you with this is, my concern is, I don't know that I want to incentivize individuals purchasing land with the explicit intent of swapping it out for more valuable land. I appreciate what you've done, and I, certainly, if I were in your position, I would have done the same thing if I thought it was something that was reasonably available. But I don't know that I want this to become something that's a trend, whether it's the state that ends up eating part of the cost, if you want to view it that way, or some other governmental agency or entity. I just don't feel comfortable about buying land, turning around, and then selling it or swapping it for more valuable land with the government. I know that I've had discussions with folks in full compliance of sunshine with respect to some land that was purchased for solid waste use, where it was purchased and then there was a very short turnaround, and it was sold to the county at a substantial increase over the price that was paid. So I just, you know, again, if Commissioner Tobias were to indicate this is of particular importance, as it's in his district, I would certainly support him on it. I think it's going to get passed anyway, but just as a, just as a general principle, I don't want to incentivize that because this time it happens to be the state, but I don't want to see something like this happen with a county where we find people buying land and then trading it for more valuable land with us. So...
Let me respond?
Up to you.
Go ahead, please.
One of the things we did when we found out about the program itself was, my realtor is actually a really good friend of mine, we went and searched not just for land that we could trade, but the state is trying to get properties connected to be able to have a larger area to create environmental sanctuaries. So all the property that we found, we actually went through probably a couple months of extra effort to make sure that all the lots we had that we were going to use in the land exchange adjoined other state-owned lands so that they could create a larger single parcel instead of just buying, you know, ones here and there. We also made sure that everything was in the environmental area that they're trying to sustain versus the lots that I am trading for are not inside that environmental protected area.
That's pretty much what I was going to say, but Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir, and we're getting twice as much of the property ergo. It's not worth as much. Commissioner Tobias, I do think we're probably going to end up with the EAL's properties, so I'm in support of this. And I hear you, Commissioner Loeb. I think as we get to listen to this on an individual basis, I don't want to make this a pattern also either, but I think this one might be appropriate.
And this just benefits the EAL's program, so I don't see how this is a negative. I mean, considering that they can have access to those wetlands, so I don't have an issue with it. Commissioner Loeb?
I mean, I'll just tell you, I wish you well on this, and in a way, I'm happy. It seems like I'm going to be totally outvoted. I'm not trying to convince anyone else to change their vote, but for the one and only reason I've already articulated, I can't support it today, but I really, truly do wish you the best with it.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just say for the record, this is the first time we've had any items like this before us, as far as people buying land to exchange it for EAL's property, just doesn't happen. So, and EAL's is not going to agree to something that doesn't benefit their program, so I'll be in support. So I have a motion.
Next motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. Item J3.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This side.
He just messed us up here.
Yeah. I'm Mark Peterson from County Finance, and I'm presenting this particular item. This is our annual financial report that our staff spend six months out of the year preparing. So I really commend our staff, the accounting section, the rest of our staff, as well as county departments, that we get input from them to be able to put this document together. So this item before you is just to acknowledge the receipt of it. I know you've had a hard copy of it. I'm not sure how many of you have read it yet. There's a lot of numbers in here. It is prepared in conformance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we are audited each year. We have, we try to, we get it done by the end of March of each year, and we present it to the Government Finance Officers Association for review. And we have been receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Financial Reporting. I think we're at 35 years. So that's just a kind of recognition of that this report reflects the ongoing operations of the county, and it's something that a common reader would be able to understand. Just to kind of go over briefly some of the things that are in the report, there's the introduction section, which is just table of contents, a transmittal letter. Then there's a management discussion, or the financial section, which has the management and discussion analysis. This is a narrative of everything that's in the book. So if a person just wanted to get a overall view of the financial condition of the county, the MDNA presents that. The MDNA will separate between governmental funds and the business-type activities. And just briefly, to identify the business-type activities are solid waste and water sewer and SCATS. Those are the three main ones. The governmental funds is the county's general fund. It's including the special revenue funds, which are areas of Transportation Trust, the Save Our Indian River Lagoon, the emergency management, the tourism development. So there's a lot of funds that are very specialized. And during last year, at the end of the year, September 30th of 2018, the fund balance for governmental funds was $291 million. Of that, a large portion was the general fund, which was $50 million, and that increased $10 million over the previous year. The next largest area was that of Save Our Indian River Lagoon, which had, let me flip Had a fund balance of $76 million. The next largest was the Brevard County Transportation Trust, which had a fund balance of $67 million. So between the general fund, Save Our Lagoon, and the county transportation trust, that made up the majority of the $291 million of fund balance. The other funds range from $5 million to $15 million, but this report goes into a lot more detail. And the fund balances the resources that we ended the year with. We're not indicating that, you know, how it's being spent in the future from a budgetary standpoint. A lot of those funds are re-appropriated to be spent in the current fiscal year. But this is just a snapshot that occurred back at September 30th. We also, in the financial section, we have the statistical indicators. This is 10 years' worth of information that an individual can go back historically and see what the trends are from a general fund or where we're spending the money in utilities. It also covers debt coverage, our debt capacity and our revenue coverages. One of the things that is, they'll also point out, is that the county's debt this last year decreased $29 million. The current outstanding debt is $192 million, down from $221 million. So the county does not have a lot of debt in comparison to other counties or other municipalities. And those are also reflected in the 10-year trends. And then the final section is the single audit section, which is required, anytime we get any federal or state grants, we have to be audited. And this section really points out the monies that we receive from both federal and state, and that the auditors concentrate very heavily on this area because when you get money from the federal and state agencies, they want to ensure that the funds are being spent properly. Again, thank you for letting me present this. If you have any questions now, or I just open it up that in the future, during the year, if anybody has a question regarding the CAFER or the information that's in here, please give us a call. We're more than willing to come and help you understand what we've spent six months of the year trying to put together.
Thanks, Mark. Commissioner Loeb?
A few things. First, I want to thank Mark for coming out. I saw Steve Burdette here earlier. I think we probably drove him away with one of the other agenda items, but they were both kind enough to come out to my office to speak with me about the CAFER. Is that the correct, correct way to pronounce that?
Yes.
I was trying to figure that out, but in any event, there were a lot of interesting little tidbits in that mountain of numbers and information. One of the items that I thought was interesting, and I'd like to have some discussions with staff about, perhaps individually, and then I'll bring them back to the commission, depending on how that pans out, one of the items pertains to the paving of roads nearing reconstruction. I think that given the amount that we have there, even if it's already earmarked for something else, knowing that we have money coming in in the future, it may save us more in the long run to start paving more roads nearing reconstruction, even if we're spending over a particular year more than we're bringing in based on that surplus that we have sitting available for that. So that's, that's something I'd like to look at and have discussions with staff over, and had it not been identified by the comptroller's side, I just wouldn't have been aware of the numbers that are truly out there. So I want to thank you all for the work that you've done and for having been totally available to come out and speak with me and presumably all the other commissioners at length about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to thank you for all your hard work in the clerk's office. This is, it's beautiful. And I also want to thank you too, just from being able to spend time with you in the past, your ability to strategically reinvest the capital. I think you're doing a great job, and I feel very confident with you guys doing what you do, and I just wanted to send you out a kudos on it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have to say, the clerk's office is very lucky to have you. I mean, not to pat you on the back and, no, you didn't pay me, but you're brilliant, and I appreciate everything that you do for this county and for the clerk's office and for our investments, and I think you're pretty amazing. So thank you. Thank you very much.
If I can also just mention, I mean, our staff, I mean, I commend the staff, I mean, from the finance director, Steve Burdette, who was here, but he had another item to take care of, our assistant finance director, Kathy Prothman, and our staff. I mean, we've got a very good group. We've been here for a number of years, so we have history. But we love what we do. But we, we love what we do and again, this is a, just a financial report. It's just a period, moment in time of here's where we're at and we want to make sure that we provide you with the information that you need to be able to make the decisions that, that you are facing every day in every commission meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
I was just going to say also, I think you guys have pretty good in-house counsel as well, so.
I make a motion to approve the report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Okay. Item number four is requesting approval to release the reservation of phosphate, minerals, metals, and petroleum rights over a .01 acre parcel of land owned by Sands Point LLC. This property was previously a portion of Lemon Street Right-of-Way that was vacated and deeded to this owner of the adjacent property several years ago. During, during the owner's attempt to sell the property, it was discovered that this reservation was held by Brevard County. And that's just because the transfer did not specifically release the mineral rights as part of that process.
Commissioner Pritchett?
It's not typical that we would still have the mineral rights and it's any bitty little strip, so I'm going to make a motion to approve this item.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I have no public comment cards. So moving on to board reports.
No way.
I know, this has got to be a record, at least for a while anyway. Mr. Kabate?
I just want, one quick item. We had given the Board a report on, you know, solid waste. We've given you two reports and we're going to have that meeting in July. One of the other outstanding things that we have, and in the second report we gave you in the last paragraph, we indicated that we were going to bring the RFP back to the Board on the waste to energy. And in fact, that wasn't a requirement when the Board approved that and asked us to move forward on it with, you know, as quickly as we reasonably could. We have been doing that, that we currently have a draft of about 140 pages, which solid waste has gone through and they're making the tweaks based on what the consultant had put together and they're filling in the gaps as needed. What I'd like to ask is just to clarify and make sure the Board would be good with it is for when we complete that, unless the Board wants us to specifically bring it back for you to review that RFP document, we will just go ahead and, and process that and keep the ball rolling because I'm not really sure exactly how quickly that'll be. Yuri does know, among everything else that he's got going, that that's very important to keep that moving along as quickly as possible. So since we did have that paragraph and I saw that we said we were going to bring it back to the Board, I wanted to bring it up now and make sure you'd be good with us just moving that RFP forward.
I make a motion to allow the county managers just to move the RFP forward.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Anything else, Mr. Kabate? That's it?
Ms. Bentley? I'd just like to remind everyone of the executive session after this meeting.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just want to thank the County Attorney's Office for their help with a variety of issues that I think have at least in part been due to my own creation in trying to get some items resolved. So they've been going above and beyond consistently since the last meeting to get me all of the information I've asked for and I don't think we could do any better than the folks we have over there.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to preface this with, I haven't had a resolution in quite some time. I have four.
I think your last one, oh no, that was, one was the Beauty Queen one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one was the best.
That one, and if there are any others, I'd be more than one to sponsor those.
And you will pay for that forever.
Yes. I have four. I brought to the Board a proposal on Barefoot Bay and about the collection of the fees. I met with some of the trustees as well as counsel for Barefoot Bay. While I'm in no position to make any type of agreement, what I mentioned to them is if their fees came in below the Consumer Price Index and would not be considered a tax increase, I think that it would be fair the way it's collected. However, should they come in at a rate higher than the CPI, I think it would be wise for the Board to then reexamine that. They're in the budget process right now. I can't honestly tell you where they're going to fall, but should they fall below, it's a moot point. If it comes above, I'd like to bring it back to the Board for further discussion. So that's number one. Number two is charter amendments. In July, I will be bringing forward some proposals for charter amendments. I spoke with the County Attorney's Office about these initiatives before and it became clear that this is a very involved and lengthy process. I'm bringing it up now because if any other Commissioners have proposals for charter amendments, it could be beneficial to bring it up at the same time so some resources and staff time could be pooled. We have June off, so this would provide ample time to work through those. Number three, this one is, there will be a motion at the end of this, but the Board has often extolled the principles of home rule. Several years ago, the city of Palm Bay, a portion of which is in my district, took the initiative to exercise home rule with its parks. This effort has been successful for all parties. The city is now able to prioritize based on the needs and desires of its citizens and many of its parks, such as Palm Bay Regional Park, are truly wonderful places. Other cities express interest in following Palm Bay's example. Cocoa Beach, for instance, has expressed interest in taking control of Lori Wilson Park, which under initiative led by Commissioner Loeb's predecessor is currently funded by the County Tourism Board. I began looking at a variety of options to apply home rule principles to parks located within municipalities and I found the issue to be very complex. We are currently operating some parks under expired inter-local agreements, for example. We have county-owned parks in municipalities and city-owned parks operated by the county. Keep in mind that even if the Board were to go in one of these directions, it would not require a cut in funding to these parks. In fact, services could be increased because MSTUs are collected within some municipalities that have city parks. We might return some revenue to them as we have in Palm Bay. Or we could continue to reduce our millages with the understanding that a municipality could increase theirs, resulting in no net increase in taxes for residents and no change in funding to parks. So my motion is simple. It's to direct staff to research county options, including what parks would be eligible for tourism funding based on the precedent that we set with Lori Wilson and what parks it may be feasible to turn over to city control with a precedent set of Palm Bay. So again, this is just a report to give us options as well as to tell us which agreements we have with cities are long expired. And so that is the motion, Madam Chair.
Second for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Loeb.
I had a couple of questions. I don't know if you want me just to address all of them in the order you brought them up or if you want to focus on your, your motion for the time being and then?
Probably with the subject he's talking about would even make sense.
Let's, let's do that. So in terms of that, I have no problem looking at options. I don't think that hurts us at all. I will tell you, I think it's, what we do obviously is going to depend on, on what's produced by staff, but I don't think there's any harm in looking at the options that are available to us, so I certainly support it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Staff, do you understand the instructions? Okay?
Yeah, we'll be reviewing, but yeah, I think we do.
All right.
And then can I just do a couple of things?
Sure. Are you done, Commissioner Tabia?
No, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
But I will.
No, please, you finish and then we'll.
On April 9th, for a lack of a better term, hell froze over. Commissioner Smith and I voted together in the minority. I thought this event should be commemorated and would like to present Commissioner Smith with the symbol of my appreciation for his reluteness, resoluteness in the face of overwhelming opposition, including the formidable canine wink. So I made up at no taxpayer expense a T-shirt for Commissioner Smith that says Principles Over Puppies.
That looks compelling.
And it's good gym workout material, so I have one too. I'm sure I'll see around town with that.
I'll make the three of us shirts.
And Commissioner Smith, it was a lot more fun with you on my side than on the other because you end, usually end up on the winning end of things. So, so thank you very much for, for sticking with that. It was fun, it was fun to have you on the right side.
Does the camera need to see this? I wish I, I'm very, very happy and honored to have this. I wish I could say that I'm looking forward to wearing it because I'm not, but thank you anyway.
Maybe you have something to paint at the house or anything?
Yeah, that's it.
In the dark, right?
That's really cute.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb?
Well, Melvin does have a new dog park, so. A couple of items on your first and second topics that you brought up. As far as Barefoot Bay, I think I may have mentioned it when it came up before. Essentially, whatever within reason you want to do with that, I'll support you. They're your constituents. It only affects them if, if you're happy with the impact it's going to have in your district. God bless, just bring something back and unless it's absolutely off the wall, I'll support it. As far as the charter amendments, since we have the fortunate misfortune, however you want to determine to call it, of sunshine, since I won't be able to ask you after the meeting, are there particular charter amendments that you think might be good for us to know about so that we can mull over them in the meanwhile, even in generalities? I'd just like to know something if you're willing to provide that info on the record.
They'll be focused on a tax collection. I'm still working through them, but this process involves a whole bunch of steps that Ms. Bentley can go through and the thought was that we could do this cumulatively so we wouldn't have to go outside should there be different ones. So I don't know if anyone else has anything that, that they would like to put on the charter, but my, my goal certainly would be to have this all done at once so we're not spreading this out over a long period of time. But I think mine, mine will be, again, with the tax collection.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Commissioner Smith?
No report.
No report. And I guess all I have to say is I appreciate the Board agreeing to allow me to go to DC and just as an update, it looks like we'll have meetings, I believe, on the 13th, but we may possibly have a meeting at the Pentagon on the 14th. So worst case, we stay for two days. Best case, we're only there for one evening, but again, I think, thank you for your support. I just wanted to be transparent on the trip and let you know kind of where we are and we'll fight for that space command here. So that's all I have right now.
Just to comment on that, that one time last year I was able to go, it made a big impact. If you're up there and you're around all of them, it means a lot to them to see our community show up. And I'm, I just know from you being up there, Madam Chair, I think it's going to make a big difference. I think we need to work hard to get the military presence here stronger.
Yeah.
And showing up makes a difference because nobody else does.
And I think I like this because it's not, it's not a bunch of legislators, you know, with appointments and them just mulling them in one after the other. This is sort of a planned, you know, methodical, got the appointment, you know, now, you know, are the chances slim? They may be, but they're not impossible and you never get anywhere without asking. So if we can get in front of those people, I think we can make a good case to.
I think, I think having you there is a big deal.
Of what Brevard County has to offer. Commissioner Loeb?
If it's all right, I'd like to move to enter executive session to discuss the Circuit Civil case that's referenced on the agenda.
Okay. Well, I was going to do that, but okay.
We do need to read the basic entry.
Yes. As authorized by Section 286.00, Section, or 8 Florida statutes, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners will now commence a private attorney-client meeting discussing settlement negotiations and/or strategy related to litigation expenditures in case of Brevard County, Florida versus Cruz et al., case number 05-2018-CA-18421. The names of the persons attending the attorney-client privilege meeting are Rita Pritchett, County Commissioner District 1, Brian Loeb, County Commissioner District 2, John Tabia, County Commissioner District 3, Kurt Smith, County Commissioner District 4, myself, Christine Isnardi, Chair and County Commissioner District 5, Frank Kabate, County Manager, Eden Bentley, County Attorney, Jad Brewer, Assistant County Attorney, Margaret Sheffield, Court Reporter, Husby King Reporting Services Incorporated, Marjorie Sasson, Court Reporter, Husby, Hughesby King Reporting Services Incorporated as an alternate. The attorney-client private meeting will be held in the County Managers Conference Room, 3rd floor of Building C at the Brevard County Government Operations Center, 2725 Judge Fran Jamison Way, Vera, Florida. The estimated length of the attorney-client session is one hour or less. I will now entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn and reconvene in the County Managers' Conference Room.
So moved.
Move. Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.